Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission meetings. Viewers are invited to write to countycommissionbroadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street North, Wichita, Kansas, 67203.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, May 22nd, 2019 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. This weekend, many of us will be celebrating Memorial Day by grilling and being outdoors if the rain ever ends or if this weather actually dries up. And Sedgwick County Fire District One has prepared a short video to remind us about grilling safety.
Each year, nearly 22,000 people end up in the emergency room due to injuries involving barbecue grills, fire pits, and outdoor fires. Here are some safety tips to keep you and your family safe this summer. Your grill should be placed a minimum 10 feet away from all combustible materials. Always make sure your gas grill lid is open before lighting it. Keep your grill clean by removing grease and fat buildup. Never leave your grill unattended. Keep children and pets from the barbecue grilling area. Get away from fire pits or chimeneas and never leave them unattended. If you smell gas or propane, turn off your grill and call 911. Never move the grill after it has been lit. If you're using a charcoal-style grill or smoker, always use the proper charcoal lighter fluid.
What's that for the cup?
Never operate your fire pit or chimenea beneath a building or overhang. Keep fire pits or chimeneas a minimum of 15 feet away from any and all combustible material, including your home and other structures. Position your fire pit or chimenea on a firm, level surface. Always extinguish fire pits, barbecue grills, and chimeneas when you are finished using them. Always keep a fire extinguisher close by and educate yourself on how to use it. Use the PASS method. Pull the pin, aim the nozzle at the base of the fire, squeeze the handle, and sweep side to side. For more safety tips, you can visit our website at www.sedgwickcounty.org.
All right. And on the agenda this morning, we have a proclamation declaring Healthy and Safe Swimming Week, a proclamation declaring National EMS Week. There are a few items related to various advisory boards. You'll be able to recognize the Sedgwick County graduates of the Mini-MPA program, and we'll also have a report of the Board of Bids and Contracts. So with that, Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Well, thank you, Kate. I appreciate it. And I want to welcome all the folks that are here in the audience. We have a full audience this morning. I want to welcome those that are joining us on KPTS and online. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, May 22nd, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invocation: To be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Do you join the flag salute?
Congratulations to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Commissioners, I'd like to add an off-agenda item to our agenda this morning. I move that we place an off-agenda item at this time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Kate, you want to take care of this? Take care of it.
Whoa, that sounds serious.
We got it. All right. So in a little bit, commissioners will consider the proclamation declaring EMS Week. So it's very fitting that we bring this item to light. Chairman Dennis recently received a letter from the Pediatric Trauma Medical Director at Wesley Children's Hospital praising our very own Dr. John Gallagher. She shared that he had been able to bridge the gap between prehospital care and the emergency room, something that is even more imperative when it comes to pediatric trauma. The highest priority in injured children is pediatric airways, and the inability to obtain a secure airway is a common cause of death in injured children. Nationally, child transports total about 15% of all transports, and of these, very few will require emergency airways. She commended Dr. Gallagher for his work in the field earlier this spring that required an emergency airway for a child. She and others recognized that this child would have likely died without Dr. Gallagher's skills. So I'd like to bring Dr. Gallagher up to the podium.
Good morning, Dr. Gallagher. Thank you very much for being here.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. Quite an honor to be recognized in this way. The -- Dr. Moloch is correct. Pediatric death is one of the most traumatic things that can happen to a community or to a family. And she's right that airway is one of the more challenging things that we're faced with. And unfortunately, because of the rarity of it, it's a skill that is nearly impossible to maintain in the field, especially with the number of providers that we have. So lots of things came together that morning to be able to serve this family. And if you'll indulge me, I actually brought a couple extra little tidbits that I think paint that story. So on that morning, as it usually does, the situation began with a 911 call. In fact, many. 911 was able to mobilize five call-takers to manage all of the flood of incoming calls and had four dispatchers managing all of the units responding to the scene, including multiple radio transmissions from myself. They rapidly were able to dispatch EMS, fire, and law enforcement. EMS brought 12 personnel to the scene. That's five fully-staffed ambulances comprising 10 paramedics. Also had a paramedic division leader, and even our community paramedic dropped what he was doing to come and help out on the scene. He actually ended up driving the ambulance that I was onboard caring for the child we're talking about. Fire department had 16 personnel on scene, six fire first responders from three squads, one of which was from our partners in Clearwater, and eight fire first responders from two quints, a battalion chief, and even the fire medical officer. Police and law enforcement had the largest turnout totaling 19 personnel, which was eight deputies, one sergeant, the Clearwater Chief of Police, the Garden Plain Chief of Police, six detectives, and two members of the command staff. So if you're keeping track, that's 56 personnel. I made 57. So put another way, that's less than 2% of the manpower on scene. So please don't take my comments as a lack of gratitude. In fact, I'm humbly happy to be here today. But as we're celebrating EMS Week, it's not about the 2% that leadership brings to the table. It's about the 98% that comes from the rest of our system that operates every day. So I was very glad to be able to do my part, but it's their part that what keeps us together every day throughout the entire year. So thanks for having me.
Well, Dr. Gallagher, we sincerely appreciate you being here this morning. We moved this to an off-agenda item because it is that important, that we want to make sure it gets on the record. Because everything we discussed before we start, I call the meeting to order, really doesn't end up in our minutes. And things like you just discussed in the letter that we received and the impact that you have training every one of those first responders that were there is critical to our infrastructure, to our citizens, to everything that we do here. And so I think it's very significant that we recognize your efforts and the efforts of all of our first responders, whether they be 911, EMS, the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, any of the folks that take care of our citizens. I want to make sure that they're properly recognized, and what you do is extremely important to Sedgwick County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Looking forward to the EMS Week proclamation.
Thank you. We have one other portion that we want to add to the off-agenda item, and we have Cody here to talk about where we're at with all the rainfall we've been receiving. Thank you, Cody, for coming over on short notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, good morning. I want to talk to you just briefly about what's going on, what we know so far, as little as it may be in some cases, about what might be happening today with the flooding event. Of course, the -- there's two phases to this. Phase one was the flash flooding event that occurred while the rain was falling and immediately afterwards. A lot of that has eased, and barricades are being picked up by both the City of Wichita and County Public Works officials. Mr. Spears can address some of that well here in just a minute. What's happening now, though, is we're transitioning to phase two, which is the longer-term river and stream flooding. And if anybody's been paying attention to the news lately, they know that the big topic of the day is what's going to happen along the North Fork of the Nenaskah River because the Bureau of Reclamation is releasing water from Cheney Reservoir. And just real quickly, let's see if there's an update on that. What's on your monitor now is the latest lake level from Cheney Reservoir, and it's 8.32 feet above normal. That's almost at 1,430 feet. Anytime it tops 1,429 feet, a water release becomes mandated by regulations. So they are opening the gates gradually throughout the morning. By early this afternoon, both gates at Cheney will be opened full bore, and the automatic concrete spillway will be automatically releasing water as well. So we're looking at a total cubic feet per second release of around 4,200 at that time, by around 1 or 2 o'clock this afternoon. Now, that becomes significant because right below the dam, the North Fork of the Nenaskah River, has a safe channel capacity of only 1,500 cubic feet per second. They're going to be releasing 4,200. So what that means at 1,500 feet, we're looking at bank-to-bank full along the North Fork. So we're going to be well in excess of that. And the impact of that, the effect of that, is the big unknown at this point. Because Cheney does its job normally and prevents flooding on that North Fork, we don't have a lot of historical data to know exactly what to expect as we move through this afternoon. So Cheney Fire and Police are out farther downstream. Viola Fire and Clearwater Fire are going to be monitoring, and of course, Sedgwick County Fire, Sedgwick County Sheriff, and us in Emergency Management, we're all going to be monitoring the situation just so that we know. The residents in the area have been warned via traditional media, via social media, and so we're going to see what happens and make adjustments on the fly as necessary, because that's really all we can do at this point. The big question also remains is what's going to be the effect downstream at Peck. If anyone wants to keep an eye on this situation, if they go to weather.gov/Wichita, which is what I have on the screens right now, and they click on this link to go to rivers and lakes, scroll down just a little bit, you see all these here. We can scroll in with the mouse wheel. The Peck River Gage, which is the first one below the confluence of the North and South Forks, we pull that up there. You can see now that the last river gauge reading was at 19.85 feet. They currently have a crest predicted at 20.1 feet. That's not as bad as it might sound. 20.1 feet on the North Fork would be catastrophic. 21.1 or 20.1 feet downstream, where the channel is wider and deeper, it's able to absorb some more of that water. So we're going to be looking at additional road closures in and around Clearwater especially, but we're not really expecting any broad impact on the general public farther downstream. It's that upstream piece that still remains the question, and we'll just have to keep an eye on it as the situation develops. Mr. Spears, did you have anything you wanted to add on what's happening with road closures at this time?
Well, I think the only thing I'd add, we're pretty concerned about the release of the water, mainly the bridges that we have. There's, I think, at least 12 of them, and this could cause some damage to the abutments and riprap and erosion around the bridges. So we're going to be watching it close, and of course, we'll be closing roads down. It's -- I guess it's a required thing by the federal government, but it's a man-made thing now, and we already had a problem to start with. So, yeah, we're pretty concerned about it.
The road closures, we've adjusted the front page of sedgwickcounty.org, the public-facing webpage. If folks go to that, and that's on your screens right now, we've added this link right here, the list of emergency road closures. This is updated. Anytime the city or county public works have roads that they're closing down, you can see some of the examples there. Well, I want to also point out that folks can change the date on this, because all they're going to see is what's been entered since midnight. So if they go up here and just change this back to yesterday, they can see everything that's been entered over the last few days. And there also may be notations on there if barricades have been picked up as well. So that's one way that folks can monitor what's going on with the situation, going to weather.gov/Wichita. Monitoring the river gauges as well is another great way to keep up to date. They can do a search for Cheney Lake level. They can pull up this graphic that I show you, and you hear it. It will tell you what the level of Cheney is. And another thing I don't think I'd mention, we're looking at a record crest of Cheney Reservoir. It will be somewhere north of 1,430 feet, and it's never -- I think the current record is 1,430.1, and they're looking at something north of that. So it's going to be an interesting next 24 to 48 hours, at least because we have more rain scheduled over the weekend, which could prolong this event. We just really don't know yet how long it might last. The Bureau of Reclamation said that they plan to -- at this point, they're planning to have water releases through Monday at least of next week. So that's kind of, again, the broad overview. Did you have any specific questions, things I didn't touch on?
Just a couple of things to make sure that everybody understands is that this is directed by the federal government, not by Sedgwick County.
Yes, very good point.
Also, the reason that they direct this is for the safety of that dam.
Right, right.
We want to make sure that we don't have a catastrophic failure on the dam.
If you notice on the graphic there now, you can see where the water level is and how much water space there is above where the water is right now to the top of the dam. And you're right, the overall reason is to not put stress on the dam, but I just want to emphasize to folks, the dam is under no threat immediately right now. We're just doing this so that we don't ever get to that point.
And we had a similar event, I think it was last October, with not quite as--
Right. Not as much of a release, plus the downstream channel was not as full as it is right now. That's what's making this situation unique. And perhaps only the second time that this has ever happened, and the last time, we just don't have any historical data to know, to draw off of what happened that time. So we'll have to keep some better records this time, so we know next time around, if there is a next time.
Very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for being here today. There's a lot of -- I think a lot of folks on the south end of the county especially that are very concerned about what's already happened and what's still to come. The expected rainfall is very concerning, and I know we probably don't have a good handle exactly on what to expect, but is there -- what's the best place to go to get information for, you know, what should we expect over the next few days? Is there more inches of water coming, or do we know that?
It's hard for them to give us much of an anticipation of rainfall amount this far out, but with several days of rain possible, you know, we could be looking at anywhere from an inch to an inch and a half rain, perhaps even more in some isolated areas. In terms of figuring out what that effect is going to be, I'm going to pull up the weather page again where we have the river gauge, and if you continue to scroll down, whichever gauge you post on here, let me back up one step here, first of all, and show folks that on that map, we don't just have, you know, right here in Wichita, you can click on any of these dots around Sedgwick County. We have the river gauge at Derby and at Mulvane, also the little Arkansas River near Sedgwick. And if we click on any of those, it pulls up that specific gauges page. And then as we scroll down, you see, first of all, what they expect, the projected crest of that river, when they expect it as well. And if you keep scrolling down, you've got more information. Historical crests, recent crests, and then even further down the page, flood impacts. So we can find on there if, once the river reaches, in this case, once the river reaches 21 feet at Peck, the north approach to the bridge there is overflowing. If you look a little bit lower, we're already past this stage. At 18 feet, water flows over 103rd Street, about two miles west of Clearwater. Flooding can reach around two feet deep in that area, and so on. So that's a good way to know what's expected on the river or stream near you, and then keep going down the page, and you'll find out what that impact is going to be at whatever level is forecast.
Compared to 2016 for Sedgwick County, is this as bad as what we had in 2016 for Sedgwick County?
I think it might be a little bit worse this time around. We're still, fortunately, we're not seeing any real property damage to public owned property, other than bridges and roads. And I don't want to minimize that at all, but at least we're not looking at evacuations, we're not looking at buildings that are damaged and that type of thing.
One of the things I keep getting questions is why we have not declared ourselves an emergency or disaster as other counties around us have. And I guess I was just, I think I understand it, but I think it'd be great for you to explain that, because it's a common question I keep hearing.
Sure. Well, one of the reasons, one of the main reasons to declare disaster is that you have exceeded local resources and you need mutual aid, either from surrounding counties or from the state of Kansas. And we've simply haven't reached that area. The type of damage that they're looking at in other parts of the state and other counties around us, they're looking at full-scale evacuations of neighborhoods and things like that. And that's, that just doesn't happen here in Sedgwick County as much as it used to. And the reason being is the mitigation projects that we've enacted over the years. Of course, going back as far as the Big Ditch, that's saved the city many, many times over and is still doing its job today. But as recently as 1998 and 99, in the 98 floods, we had a serious impact in West Wichita because of backup along the Cowskin Creek. Well, immediately after that event, we were able to secure funding through FEMA for a mitigation project where they cleaned out and widened the channel there, especially north of the US-54 crossing at Cowskin Creek. And now that water flows through much faster and much easier, doesn't back up, doesn't give us the problems like it did in 98, where we were evacuating nursing homes, for example, and having to move residents to higher ground.
Well, thank you for the answers. I really appreciate knowing that you're there monitoring all this and helping stay informed. I think it's tremendous that you came today as well. Mr. Chairman, is there anything else for the off-agenda this morning?
I just have a couple of questions for him and then make a motion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the ELC formed right now?
We're at a monitoring level. I mean, everybody in the office is on alert on this, watching different sources of input. Co-worker and I are actually getting ready to go out west and put some actual eyes on it, and then others are in the office looking at that. We'll be sending out updates. We have it activated to a level where we're bringing in other partners, because we just haven't reached that level of an emergency at this point.
Okay, very good. But another important point I want to make sure everyone understands is that we have fire, public works, sheriff's office, all out in the county right now, checking all the roads, checking the bridges, making sure that everything is safe. Our main goal is to make sure our public is safe.
We got very short notice on this. It was maybe around 2 o'clock, even maybe 3 o'clock yesterday, when the Bureau called me and said, "This is going to happen." So we had to scramble quickly, and I've been really impressed with our other partners and how quickly they have responded. And as you mentioned, they're already out there in the field watching this.
Very good. Well, thanks for coming over on short notice. I know you're very busy over there, but I wanted to make sure that we got this out to the public as quick as we could.
You bet.
Commissioner Howell.
With that, I just want to say thank you to Emergency Management for all you do. You have a tremendous staff and appreciate you being so vigilant on these issues. And I also want to thank EMS, I think one of the very best EMS systems in our nation. It's great to highlight them a little bit this morning. Thank Dr. Gallagher for his good story this morning that he brought to us this morning. And with that, I'd like to make a motion, we'd receive and file the off-agenda item.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I do not have anyone signed up to speak on public agenda this morning, but if anyone is in the audience that would like to speak, I'll give you an opportunity at this time. Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, next item.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring Healthy and Safe Swimming Week.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Whereas Sedgwick County sees causes of recreational waterborne illness annually, which can cause closing of swimming pools, hot tubs, and water playgrounds, and make people, especially children, seriously ill. And whereas in the past two decades, there have been substantial increase in the number of water illnesses, outbreaks, associated with swimming. Recreational water illness includes a wide variety of infections such as gastrointestinal, skin, ear, respiratory, eye, neurologic, and wound infections. And whereas the week preceding Memorial Day has been designated as Health and Safe Swimming Week, and this year's theme is Pool Chemistry for Healthy, Safe Swimming. And whereas awareness of recreational water illnesses and healthy swimming behaviors plays an important role in stopping transmission of diseases. And whereas swimmers and parents of young swimmers can also promote healthy and safe swimming through pool chemistry. When swimmers don't shower before getting into pools, hot tubs, spas, or water playgrounds, there's less chlorine in the water to assist in killing germs. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 20th to 26th, 2019, as Healthy and Safe Swimming Week in Sedgwick County, and urge all residents to practice healthy and safe swimming practices. Will you approve the proclamation?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And this is accepted by Adrian Byrne this morning. Welcome, Director of the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. So this week, as you said, before Memorial Day, has been designated Healthy and Safe Swimming Week, and this is the 15th anniversary of this observance. So each year, the week focuses on simple steps swimmers and pool operators can take to help ensure a healthy and safe swimming experience for everyone. As the proclamation stated, the theme for Healthy and Safe Swimming Week in 2019 is Pool Chemistry for Healthy and Safe Swimming. It focuses on the role of swimmers and parents of swimmers of remembering to shower before swimming in public pools, hot tubs, spas, or water playgrounds. Chemicals like chlorine are added to pool water to kill germs and stop them from spreading, helping to keep swimmers healthy. Swimmers and parents of young swimmers can also promote healthy and safe swimming through a number of things. It's important to shower before getting in the water. Rinsing off in the shower for just one minute can take care of most of the things on a swimmer's body to keep it safe. Check yourself. It's important for any parents that are changing diapers to do so in the shower or in the bathroom and not by the poolside. Don't let children swim when sick with diarrhea. Just swallowing one mouthful of water with germs such as diarrhea in it can make someone sick for up to three weeks. And then other things to remember, just every hour, everyone out. Take bathroom breaks every 60 minutes. Check diapers again, and reapply sunscreen, and drink plenty of fluids. And thank you. I appreciate being able to accept this proclamation.
Thank you very much, Adrian. Thanks for being here, and thanks for passing on that message, especially before Memorial Day. It's a great time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, proclamation declaring National EMS Week.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas the dedicated paramedics and emergency medical technicians of Sedgwick County Emergency Medical Services are committed to provide exemplary medical care and ambulance transport to the citizens of Sedgwick County. And whereas Sedgwick County EMS is ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency health care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those experiencing sudden illnesses or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and other healthcare professionals. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishment of emergency medical services provided by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 25th as Emergency Medical Services Week. Medical Services Week. The 2019 theme for EMS Week is beyond the call, and I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. This is being accepted by Dennis Mauch, Director of our EMS. Welcome.
Commissioners, thank you. Dennis Mauch, EMS Director. It's great to have a week to celebrate our 911 dispatchers, our fire first responders, our sister agencies such as Clearwater EMS, our OMD, everybody in the care facilities who are involved in EMS on a daily basis. I want to particularly let you know that this is an honor for me to be able to accept this for the men and women of EMS who are out there every hour of every day providing care and compassion to those who find themselves ill or injured. I find it a privilege to be able to work with these dedicated individuals every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you so much, Dennis, and thank you, Chairman, for that. When I, before I became a Commissioner, I toured a bunch of departments, and I have to say yours was probably the coolest one. And they have this big screen where they can kind of predict which calls are going to come in at what kind of day, you know, what time of day. So I think the technology that you guys use and just the way that you guys are smart about how you're caring for our community, I think is really impressive. And if anybody wants to go check it out, I would encourage you to do it because it really is kind of cool how, how you guys manage your operation. The other thing I just want to point out, for those of you who don't know, we did, Chairman and I did the Fire Ops 101. And I know that we've said this before, but I cannot reiterate how incredible it is that you guys save people's lives every single day and the CPR that you do, or what is it called? It's not CPR, it's...
CCR.
CCR. What does that stand for?
Cardio Cerebral Resuscitation.
Yeah.
It's pit crew approach is how we do it.
It is, I was exhausted. It was 19 minutes of doing CPR and then my person died. Right? I mean, so can you imagine? And that's, that's like a short time, right? So, so if you're doing it for an hour with two people, can you imagine? And I did it with five people and my person died. And there was no chaos going around. So I, I'm just, I'm incredibly impressed with what you do. And I just, I just want to express my appreciation for everything that goes on and how safe you keep our community.
Thank you. And I'll take back to our employees were the coolest as well.
Right on.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Mauch, I just want to say thank you for all you do. I have said repeatedly, I think, are we one of the very best EMS systems in the nation? And I am a firm believer in that. We had a presentation recently that was given to us in paper. Of course, we had a budget hearing last week. And the numbers, I would say, you got, your department is nearly perfect. It's just 99.9% doing exactly what you're supposed to do, and the numbers are incredible. If you call 911, we have extremely high response rate, and I'm just so impressed. And I'd like to just reflect also that our system of care, it's in the, it's in the resolute, in the proclamation this morning, but it's, I want to highlight the fact that our firefighters across our county are also EMTs, and that's part of our system of care. And they're all certified by the OMD, our Dr. Gallagher's Office, Office of Medical Director. And our very own, our very own Lisa Core, who happens to be our office administrator, is a volunteer for the Clearwater EMS. As I get to know these folks and see how they operate, I'm extremely impressed. And I, agreeing with Commissioner Cruz, I visited the training facility over, over on Stillwell a while back, and Dr. Gallagher was showing me around, and he just grabbed five people, said, "Go." You know, gave them a scenario. And within just literally seconds, the five people came together as a team, and they all knew exactly what to do and to save a life. And it was just really impressive to me at that practice and those scenarios you guys play. And the real world experiences that you have makes our EMS system the very best in the world, certainly the nation. I think we're one of the very best in the nation. I don't know what goes on outside the nation, but I'll say thank you for all you do. I think it's, the proclamation is very fitting. We should recognize what's great in Sedgwick County, and this is excellent. So thank you for all you do. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And just a couple more points. Out of the entire nation, how many are certified like our EMS is?
I believe it's at 103.
103, out of the entire nation, out of thousands of, of emergency management systems. We are one of 103. I want to thank you for that. One thing to clarify just a little bit, the 99%, we're actually 100% there.
Okay.
The 99% is one hour of transport for non-emergent.
There you go.
Okay?
Thank you.
So 100% of the time, we're there. And I want to make sure that...
Absolutely.
Let everyone know that we don't skip anybody, okay?
Thank you.
Very good. Well, again, I want to thank you and I want to thank all of our first responders.
Well, thank you. It's an honor to serve.
Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Appointments. Item C, accept the resignation of Erin Hamilton from the Third District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun?
Commissioner Mike Papoun, interim county counselor. You have before you the resignation of Erin Hamilton. Chairman Dennis is, one of Chairman Dennis's appointment to the Citizens Advisory Board. The recommended action is for you to accept the resignation.
Thank you. Erin Hamilton has been a valuable member of my Citizens Advisory Board. I want to thank him sincerely for the service that he has provided, but he has some other things that he needs to do right now. And so I move that we accept his resignation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Andre Sisco to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Again, Mike Papoun, interim county counselor. You have before you a resolution appointing Andre Sisco to Mr. Howell's appointment to the Sedgwick County Council on Aging and Physical Disability. This is a four-year term, new appointment, and the resolution's in proper legal form, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just thank Andre Sisco for volunteering to do this board appointment. By, by, by the way, she has served on this before, but she's also a, an elected official at the Oklin Improvement District, and she also is a well, a well-dependent upon person at the VA Hospital for all she does. I want to say thank you to her service to this community. But, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, make a motion, we'd appoint Andre Sisco to this board.
Thank you. We have a motion to appoint. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you. Welcome, and you're going to be sworn in at this time.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. Help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this appointment. I, as Commissioner Howell stated, I have been on this board before and I enjoyed serving at that time, and hopefully I could continue to serve and make a difference this time up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for serving. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, resolution appointing Triva Liktie to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Commissioners, Mike Papoun, interim county counselor. The next resolution is one appointing Triva Liktie, Liktai, which is actually a reappointment to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board. She formerly was appointed by Commissioner Unruh, and now Commissioner Meitzner wants to appoint her for another four-year term. Resolution's in proper form, ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Triva, I'd like to thank her for her past service and out of respect with, in discussions with former Commissioner Unruh. I'm happy to reappoint and keep your position going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
All right. Good morning again. I, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board. Help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I consider it a privilege to be on the Advisory Board of Calm Care. We know that one in five people lives with mental illness, and so it's a very important service that Calm Care provides to our community, from the Community Crisis Service on to case management and everything in between. So I thank you for this, and I thank the Commission for knowing that mental health is a very important agenda item for you to hold and to keep the services going and to improve them in Sedgwick County. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for serving. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, resolution reappointing Cody Corbett to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board.
Commissioners, Mike Papoun, interim county counselor. This is another reappointment, resolution for you today. We'll be requesting reappointing Cody Corbett to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board. This is a board that, he is actually in the alternate position for this, for the employee appointment to this board. This is a board that hears grievances usually related to employment, adverse employment decisions by the county manager, and they get to, classified employees get to appeal to this board. And in the event that the regular employee appointment is not available, Cody Corbett would be sitting on that board. Resolution's in proper form, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Move to approve the resolution appointing Cody Corbett.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Is Cody here? Hi. Mr. Arnold, thank you very much for being up here this morning. We appreciate your help. Next item, please.
New business. Item G, presentation of Mini MPA certificates to the Sedgwick County 2018-2019 graduates.
Morning, Misty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to be here today to celebrate the graduates of the Mini MPA program for 2018 and 19. We want to thank you for your continued support of professional development of your staff as well as the leadership of Sedgwick County to continue to advance management and leadership throughout your organization. The Mini MPA program is led by the Hugo Wall School at Wichita State University. It's existed for more than 18 years and has more than 500 graduates that are throughout the state of Kansas. People who participate in this program come for 16 weeks. They're there every Friday morning for at least three hours. They talk about topics ranging from finance to management to human resources to leadership, as well as community engagement and current topics in public service. Folks come from organizations as large as Sedgwick County to very small communities throughout the state. They're nonprofit leaders, and they are leaders from public education as well in the class. Part of the best learning is the networking that happens in that environment. Classes are taught by faculty at the Hugo Wall School as well as practitioners in our region. We have folks that are fire chiefs, we have folks that are in the Sheriff's Department, we have folks that are IT, we have marketing professionals, and that cross-learning and that continuous commitment to bettering themselves and the organizations they serve is what makes this such a unique program and for our graduates. So want to just thank you for allowing us to be here and want to call the names of the folks from Sedgwick County that participated in this program this year and thank them for their hard work. So, okay, ready? Okay, so Alex Alba. Greg Baker. Joe Carrier. Michelle Culvert. Rhonda Mollenkamp was also a participant and graduate. She cannot be here today. Hope Hernandez. John Medlam is also a participant, is not able to join us today. And Laura Myers. So we'd like to thank you and congratulate all of our graduates who worked hard in completing this program. We'd like to ask all of you to step outside for a photo op to commemorate this special moment for all of us, and joined by Melissa Walker from the Hugo Wall School. So thank you all.
Congratulations to each and every one of you. We appreciate your, continuing your education. I was going to ask about a picture, but I guess you were ahead of me on that one. Thank you very much.
We do, great. Thank you.
Thank you again. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts' regular meeting on May 16th, 2019.
Morning, Joe.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts that occurred on May 16th results in six items that we're presenting to you this morning for your recommendation approval. The first item is our CMS 1PC. It's called Scrub Seal Oil for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the bid from Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions Incorporated. It's an initial purchase in the amount of $330,400 and then establish contract pricing for one year with one-year option to renew. Item number two is light 18-inch stone for riprap. I like saying that word, for, for Public Works. And this recommendation is to accept the low bid from H Escavating LLC. Initial purchase of $27,400 and establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is a wide-area riding mower. This is for fleet management for Lake Afton Park. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Kansas Golf and Turf Incorporated, and The recommendation is to accept the bid from Kansas Golf and Turf Incorporated, and this is in the amount of $71,293. Item four is the web-based subscription solution for the Health Department, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from My Sidewalk Incorporated, and that's for five one-year options at an annual cost of $16,000. And then we want to establish contract pricing listed for any additional consulting, customization, and onsite training. Item number five is the direct support professional recruitment marketing campaign, and this is for SCDDO. This recommendation is to accept the low proposal from Nye and Associates, and that's in the amount of $68,900. And our final item, item number six, is the Sedgwick County Radio Replacement Program, and this is for various departments. This recommendation is to accept the overall best proposal from Motorola Solutions Incorporated. This initial purchase will be in the amount of $4,375,575.52, and then we'll establish contract pricing for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items, sir.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Joe this morning? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just looking at item number three on the mower, do we actually spec out this particular model? And that's, so we only, do we spec out the requirements for the mower or do we spec out the exact model?
No, we, for the most part, we try not to spec out a particular brand, but in this case, it was a special width to the mower, and unfortunately, only one supplier was able to provide, I believe it was a 14-foot mark?
Yeah.
14-foot mower width.
So, we did spec out the model in this case?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I don't like that, but okay, I'll accept it this time. Thank you for the answer, appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Where are we at with the radio replacements? I never, never heard back on if we were going to extend it over five years or, should we defer this so that we can get some of that information?
The decision today is to accept the contract, and how we acquire radios, whether it's in a three-year or a five-year phase-in, we will analyze and, if possible, phase them in over extended number of years versus the three that was proposed.
I guess, I guess my issue with that would be, why would we go ahead and approve that before we have like the plan of what departments and how we're going to be moving forward with that?
I think Laura does have a plan, and she's here today and can come up and speak to this, but...
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
There is a plan out there in phase, for a three-year phase-in, and let's let her talk about an extension of that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Forshee with Emergency Communications. Absolutely, we are looking at now, based on the conversations that we've had about it, about extending that replacement plan over five years. As the county manager said that this is not, accepting this contract doesn't guarantee what we replace when, just gives us the options over five years to start replacing. What we would like to do at this point is accept the contract to at least, the very minimum, get those radios off of our system that are causing interference, and that's that interference that hinders public safety access to the system. From there, we'll start looking at spreading out that plan that we have, evaluating our needs, and making sure that we're in line with what you guys would like to spend budgetarily.
No, I get that, but I guess what personally concerns me about it is, once we accept this, we're kind of pregnant, and so, we can't make any changes at that point, so... Wouldn't that be correct?
Well, we are not...
So, we're, once we accept that, we're with Motorola, we know it's going to be 4.3, roughly, million dollars. We just don't know if we're going to do that in three years or five years.
Accepting it does not bind us to purchasing any amount of radios, any...
But it would restrict us from then saying, okay, so, you know, BK Technologies, we can't go with them, or CACOM, we can't go with them.
It does not make us bound to just a single vendor on the system if we decide later that we want to do another purchase with another vendor, go out to RFP again for a reevaluation. It doesn't bind us to anything, it just allows us to begin purchasing under that contract pricing with Motorola at this point. So, if we were to decide in a year that for another one of our agencies, we wanted to use another vendor, we are certainly open to do so.
But is it not, was part of the bid not, we got more competitive pricing from Motorola because we were talking about buying so many and doing such a large purchase?
Correct.
Is that not correct?
We talked about up to X amount of radios under each, like portables, mobiles, accessories, things like that, but nothing in that language and purchasing can speak to that as well binds us to purchasing that many of radios or anything of the sort. Do you want to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. When we do a proposal, we, we ask them for a particular initial purchase. This is, but in the document itself, it says it's not a guarantee that this will be the purchase. Also, there is a provision for contract termination at any time, and the provision, which I believe is 60 days prior notice, 60? Well, just contract termination, yes. So, it allows us to exit the contract. Now, concurrent with a regular contract, we could formulate another contract with another vendor and have several concurrent contracts. So, I think we have some latitude to act, not just exclusively with Motorola. That's my opinion as a professional, as a purchasing professional.
Is that legal's opinion as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I mean, and I know Laura, we've talked about it, it just, it's still, when, when we're looking at potentially spending well over a million and a half dollars more going with Motorola versus a different brand, it still gives me some heartburn considering our budget situation and a lot of other expenses we have coming. But I'll go ahead and approve this today because I know that's something that, that is important to you and your staff, but, but I do want to have more discussions on how we're going to implement that.
Absolutely.
Because I don't want to replace radios just to replace radios, particularly when each unit price is $5,000.
Absolutely.
That's, that's quite a, quite a hit to the budget.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Yes, we want to approach it very strategically, in a way that serves the county the best. Absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions, Joe? I have one question, again, back to Commissioner Howell's question. There is no other option besides the $71,000 mow-in mower? That's, we can't buy a tractor with some, with a...
Yes, we could buy other tractors if we needed different widths on that particular mower area, and Mark, do you want to address why the 14-foot was necessary?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Shroff, Park Superintendent. To bring you where we're at today, back in 2010, when we bought the mower that we have, we knew then that that production was going to quit, and the next equal to that mower was a John Deere, and it was, at that time, it was $60,000. So, Penny and I put our heads together and we increased the set aside, starting back in 2010, to financially plan for this date because we knew when we're going to replace these, it was going to be twice the amount of what we paid for the one we're getting rid of. The 14-foot we have, the current one we have is 11-foot, this is going to be a 14-foot cut, and with the increase in, or with the addition of the JRBR property, that's another 20-plus acres that we have to mow. So, this, this mower will increase our capability by 25% to get, allow our staff to get the job done.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure we'd looked at all the options when we're spending this much money.
Yeah.
Okay, and the other thing on the radios, I've used Motorola in my jobs in the military, almost exclusively, and they do work and they do last, so I support that decision. I don't see any other questions. Move to approve Board of Bidding Contracts Recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stolz with County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items I through P this morning.
Thank you. Move to approve India through Papa.
Second.
I have a question.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. I got an email this morning from Director Byrne Lutz on My Sidewalk being on consent. I don't see that on consent this morning. Can you clarify?
It was the fourth item of consent, I believe.
I was mistaken. I was mistaken, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, that's all I need to know. Thank you so much, that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Any discussion over the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Papun, what do you have for us this morning?
We really don't have anything right now. I know we're meeting to discuss a review of the entire session on how the county's priorities were addressed, and we'll be bringing that back to the Commission shortly.
Very good. Can you give me the status of comm care funding for next year?
I may want to have Mr. Kaufman come forward on that. I believe he has more specific information than I have, although I know what the result was.
Good. Morning, Tim.
Good morning, Commissioners. As we talked yesterday, there was a veto of part of comm care's funding in the budget that Secretary, or that Governor authorized, but there were some legislative, some administrative avenues that we were going to pursue to protect that funding, and yesterday afternoon, I had the opportunity with Joan Tammany to have a phone call with Deputy Secretary of Keadads, and we're assured that that funding would be made available for this year, so they're working on the contract right now to make sure that we get that funding. And then the funding was put into the budget for 2020 that was adopted, so I think we're in good shape today.
Okay, well, it was kind of a shock yesterday when we heard that we may not get funding for comm care. So, next year, we definitely have to have our comm care funding as part of the basic budget for the state of Kansas. We can't have this thing looking like it's an add-on or an addition. This is foundational funding for comm care. So, I want to make sure that we work very diligently with our legislature next year that we don't end up in this situation. I appreciate the fact that Keadads was able to come up with an administrative solution on it, but administrative solutions don't solve our problem long-term. We need a long-term solution to make sure that we continue funding for comm care. It's too critical a piece here in Sedgwick County for us to have anything other than ensure we have foundational funding for that operation.
I agree.
Anything else, Mr. Papun?
No, sir.
Very good, thank you. Next item, please.
Other.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anyone else have anything for other? I have a couple of things for other this morning that I'd like to discuss. First thing, if Kate, if you could put up the PowerPoint that we have. Very good. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to attend a breakfast honoring heroes, and that breakfast honored a number of heroes from Sedgwick County, and we have some of those in the audience today, actually, and I want to make sure that we recognize them, that we're going to see some pictures of them here in a minute, but let me read through a couple of these. We'll start off with 911 Dispatcher. On the afternoon of September 18, 2018, Mary Scholl Walter took a call for service in the western portion of Sedgwick County. The call appeared to be a routine suspicious character incident. Mary was able to get all the required information and ensure that the units had a clear picture of what had taken place. Two deputies were dispatched to the incident, but before both could arrive, one deputy stated he was out with the subject vehicle by himself. After approximately four minutes alone with the suspect, the deputy keyed up and could be heard fighting with the suspect. Mary quickly reacted and broadcasted on law enforcement channels that there was an officer in trouble. Immediately after she put out that call, the deputy keyed up and said that there were shots fired. Again, Mary quickly notified the incoming units that they were approaching an extremely dangerous situation where shots had been fired. Next came radio traffic that no dispatcher ever wants to hear. Officer down. The next unit on scene was advised both the deputy and suspect were unresponsive. From that moment on, radio traffic was constant with other units checking out the scene, doing what they could to help. During this exceptionally stressful time, Mary did the outstanding job of maintaining her professionalism and composure, assisting with the needs and requests of the units on scene. She was calm in the chaos. What started out as a routine incident turned to the worst experience a dispatcher and public safety family can face. We need to recognize Emergency 911 Dispatcher of the Year, Mary Scholl Walter, and we thank her very much for her service. Next individual I'd like to recognize is the Sheriff Officer of the Year. This past January, while on duty, a fellow deputy began choking on a piece of food. Sergeant Gary Ficken immediately jumped into action, performed the Heimlich maneuver, thanks to Sergeant Ficken's quick thinking and action, he saved his fellow deputy, and she was able to resume duty. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to recognize Sergeant Gary Ficken, Sheriff's Officer of the Year. Next in room for Firefighter of the Year is our own Fire Chief Doug Williams, was recently appointed the chief after serving as interim chief since December 2018. Been on the fire service for the past 30 years, serving as a firefighter, lieutenant captain, division chief, before being named interim chief. Ladies and gentlemen, our Firefighter of the Year, Chief Williams. And also EMS Paramedic of the Year. During the early morning of September 18, Paramedic Alex Thomas was caring for a critically ill patient being transported by, to a local hospital. While in transit, the ambulance was struck by an intoxicated driver. The patient was secured and caught, but Alex was thrown forward in the back of the unit. He quickly composed himself and continued to treat the patient while the second ambulance was en route. He refused treatment for himself. Captain Brendan McGreevy was on the second ambulance and noted that while transferring the patient to the second ambulance, the patient had a rapid decline in status. Alex was able to act with calm and clear demeanor while still orchestrating care for his patient, even though he had been through stress and trauma of an accident. He displayed a great deal of critical thinking, leadership, and reserve during a stressful incident. Our EMS Paramedic of the Year, Alex Thomas. These are indicative of all the people that serve Sedgwick County each and every day for our folks, and I want to thank those that are in the audience today very much for their continued service, but I want to thank everyone else that is doing their job every single day, even though they're not being recognized every single day, and they know that they're, they're definitely in our hearts, and we thank them very much for their service. Thank you, and thanks for being here today. I want to go on with the next slide and talk about a couple of other items. First of all, I received a call last week from David Spears. It's in Commissioner Cruz's district, what was going on, but because I'm the chairman, he also called me and Commissioner Cruz to let us know that up at 93rd Street North and Ridge Road, we had a significant problem with our road. So, David, if you could go through the next slides and explain what was going on and recognize the folks that made this happen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, David Spears, Director of Public Work. Certainly a pleasure to be here this morning. I want to introduce to you Jerry Martin. Jerry is the foreman of our Andale Yard. We have five yards out there. I want to describe to you an event last week ago today, Jerry was out looking at his roads, inspecting where we're closing roads down, looking at culverts and what they do. All the guys do that. At Ridge Road and 93rd Street North, Jerry had gone down by there earlier in the day, and there was a, the culvert underneath Ridge Road, and there was a lot of pressure on it, there was a lot of water backed up. Didn't think a whole lot about the time, looked at it, it was all right, went around his district, and at the end of the day, Jerry thought back, you know, now I don't know if this was intuition or experience, but he says, I think I'll go back and look at that one more time. So, he went back towards the end of the day and found out that the road was eroding around the culvert, there was so much water pressure, and so immediately, we began scrambling and we shut the road down, and this happens to be in Commissioner Cruz, Lacy Cruz's district, and we mobilized a lot of people, and I guess I'll let Jerry go through these slides. Come on up, Jerry, if you want to describe what's going on, then go ahead.
We excavated the hole at that point, ran into a lot of soft muddy dirt. 1,100 acres drained through that particular culvert, so we had to dig it, overdig, and then fill it back in and pack it in good with a plate compactor. And the one on the left, we started setting the boxes, and that's nine total boxes, seven complete ones, and then two end sections.
Six by three.
Yeah, six feet wide, three feet tall. We started digging the hole Thursday morning. Friday, about 10:30, we started setting the boxes, and Friday at 1:30, that is the flowable fill that was brought out, and we put that in Friday afternoon late.
16 yards.
Yeah, eight yards on each side, and that, we didn't use to use that till about three years ago. We started using it. It helps keep the road from settling later on as more rain comes. And then I managed to talk a few people, come in Saturday, and we did half the asphalt Saturday, and then Monday, that's the slide on the right, we finished it Monday, and then it started raining again. So, normally, we wait a whole day before we open it, but we opened it by about 3:30 that afternoon. Everybody was pretty happy that goes to Sedgwick. And what we did, we did, we pulled people and equipment from other crews to make the project go a little bit quicker. Normally, we don't have that luxury, but when I talked to David, he gave the green light, and I was on the phone right away, so it worked out well.
Well, thank you. And to explain this a little bit further, normally, this takes over a week to do what they did in a couple of days.
Yeah, did it about halftime, I would say, and I think the total materials we ended up, I just got a report on it today, about $20,000 in the labor and equipment, another 10, so it's about a 30, little over $30,000 project.
But the biggest problem that we had was that we were faced with a huge amount of rain coming in right after that, and if we'd have left it in the condition it was initially, we'd have lost everything that you did up to that point, so continuing to work is what allowed this to be fixed. I want to make sure that I let Commissioner Cruz talk about it, since it's her district.
Thank you. I just want to say how impressed I was. I mean, I received the call, you said we were going to have it done in four days, and by golly, it was done in four days, so I really appreciate you working this weekend, this past weekend, and I also want to, I appreciate our communications team getting it out to the public and letting everybody know, you know, kind of how quickly we were trying to get things resolved. So, I understand the more that I learned about all this, it's kind of cool seeing the pictures and seeing exactly how it's done, because I think a lot of people just don't, they drive over the roads every day, but they don't understand how they, how they get built, so I appreciate this explanation, and I will certainly be sharing it with my constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And one final point before we move on to the next item, but if you hadn't have gone back out there and noticed that, and we'd have had a catastrophic, catastrophic failure of that during the middle of the night in a rainstorm, someone could have run into that and been killed. So, once again, kudos to our Public Works folks. You do great work every single day, just as everyone that's involved in Sedgwick County... Just as everyone that's involved in Sedgwick County, we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to recognize the people that are going above and beyond every single day. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Now go back out to Andale and let's go to work.[614.02][614.02](laughing) Anyway, I wanted to touch on one other thing with Public Works. I got a phone call just this morning from a guy named Johnny Hammond, who called several weeks ago and had an issue. And we sent Scott Lind back out to take a look at it. And he just called this morning to say thank you. He appreciates exactly what Public Works does each and every day. So this was unsolicited. I just happened to receive it before I came in here and I wanted to pass that on and make sure you tell Scott and everyone else that was involved how much we appreciate it.
I'll do that. We don't get a lot of thank yous and it's a very thin file, but I'll put, I'll put that in there.[653.37][653.37](laughing)
Very good. Does anyone else have anything for other this morning?
I have just one question. Based on the event that's going to happen at Tinie with 1 o'clock, are we going to have, is communications going to be out there covering that and be able to report and support?
I think we have a number of entities out covering that. Public Works, the sheriff, and as Cody alluded to, other emergency management people from cities. Comms will definitely be piped into that and we'll put out information as it flows.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know what all channels are covering it, but when I watched TV this morning, they had live coverage from that on TV this morning.
They did.
So I know that the TV stations are picking it up.
Okay.
Very good. Chief Williams, do you have something?
Good morning, Commissioners. Chief Doug Williams. Yeah, Rusty asked me to speak to what we did last night. He notified me last night when the communications came out that the potential for flooding. And we sent our, two or three of our crews out last night and we had, we were fortunate that we had three individuals that had grown up out in that area and have seen that flooding over the years. So we went out and we researched that whole area last night and drove it from, from the lake all the way to Clearwater and worked that whole area. While we were out, we got notified of the Facebook post that we had a trapped person that was, you know, possibly in danger. And we were fortunate that the crews were close to that when we got that report. So we were able to check on that person and, and actually, they were on the Cowskin Creek, which was receding at the time, so they're not involved in what's going on today. So we've taken care of that also. But, but we've had crews working all the way, checking for bridges and homes and warning people that, you know, we have several people down the Viola area that already are in island and we're advising them that it could get worse today and they probably should get out while they still can.
Very good. Well, thank you. Keep your fire crews out there. We appreciate it. Okay, I don't see anything else for other. At this time, I'd like to recess the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and call to order the regular meeting of the governing body of Fire District Number One for May 22nd, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak on public agenda, but if anyone has anything, that would be an opportunity. I don't see anything for public agenda. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoles with the manager's office. Recommend approval of consent item A, Adam, which is actually an extension of what we discussed on bid board before concerning radio purchase.
Thank you. Move to approved consent item Alpha.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Does anyone have anything else to discuss during the Fire District Board? Seeing nothing, I'm going to adjourn the Fire District Board and call back to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 10:35 for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel relating to the employment of a management level county employee.
Thank you. I have a motion. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. We're going back to the little room, back behind.
Just the basic fire knowledge that I got was really how much further I can push myself physically and mentally than maybe I ever thought I could before.
I've learned so much. One of the great things about being in the academy here at Sedgwick County is that we have a great opportunity to learn with so many different people.
The hardest part for me was probably adjusting to actual fire scenarios. It was the first time I've ever been in a situation like that where it was actually hot.
We had to get up a slide so we can get a flag, and our class flag. And it took us three tries, but finally came up with a plan and able to get it. We all came together as a team. We, to get everything done, we worked really good together. All the guys we have, they're great, great people.
We got lots of reps in, lots of live fires, learned what it's actually like to be under heat and perform under stressful situations. Learning to work as a team with eight other individuals on a daily basis.
We had to do like a, kind of a confined space training with our air packs in the early weeks. You got to go through pipes, climb upstairs, ladders, all with your full gear on.
You actually got to see like firsthand how a building will collapse and that was awesome.
Doing the controlled burnout in Garden Plain, we got to do some really great training on an actual house. That's training that's hard to beat.
Just did different things, like we would stretch at the beginning of every session and we could go for a jog, anywhere from mile and a half to maybe two and a half miles. Being part of a team and all of you trying to strive to achieve the same goal and get through something tough together.
And I can't wait to be a part of a job that I just love to go to every day and enjoy thoroughly and also being able to do something positive in our community.
We are Sedgwick County Fire District One, recruit 51801.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Crafton with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. Did you know that your first DUI offense can cost you up to a $1,000 fine and an automatic six-month suspension of your driver's license? Last year alone, there were nearly 2,000 alcohol-related accidents. Of those, 25% resulted in an injury or a loss of at least one life. One in four occupants in a DUI-related accident are either injured or killed as a result of the collision. All DUI accidents can be avoided. When you go out for the evening, plan ahead. Use ride sharing, have a designated driver, or call a family member for a ride home.
Buckle up.
Get a ride home.
And don't drink and drive.
Welcome to Sedgwick County Division of Corrections. Come join our team. We have an extensive range of facilities and programs. You could work with either adults or juveniles. We have job opportunities at the juvenile detention facility, juvenile residential facility, juvenile intake and assessment center, home-based supervision, juvenile field services, adult field services, adult residential and work release program, and criminal justice alternatives.
My name is Trey Davis and I'm an intensive supervision officer. I'm on the high-risk team for probation, so I meet with my clients weekly. I help them get jobs, help them get into treatment, make sure they're attending treatment. I go to court for them if they're in jail. I'm basically the middle man between my client and the judge. I do love my job. I like meeting with my clients. It's rewarding when they complete probation, when they, they get off successfully. It's fun to see them grow into people of society that are successful.
My name is Anna Aguilar and I'm a correction worker at JDF. I supervise the kids on a daily basis. I hold them responsible for their expectations every day, issuing out discipline when they don't follow through with their expectations. And I try to build rapport with them. Always wanted to work with kids directly to try to make a difference in their lives.
My name is Samuel Urbain. I'm a senior correction worker here at juvenile detention facility, helping our people, helping our kids, helping out, you know, troubled youth and, you know, just getting a good impact out of them with all my experience and all the backgrounds that I've inquired. It takes somebody special to work in this department and you got to be ready to make a positive change in people's lives because they're going to be back in the community.
Our mission is to provide a continuum of evidence-based correctional services in our community, which promotes public safety and accountability while supporting positive behavior change in an effort to reduce recidivism. Sedgwick County offers a competitive benefits package, health, dental, and vision insurance, capers retirement plan, 457B pre-tax retirement plan, dependent care and medical flexible spending accounts, vacation leave, sick leave, and ten paid holidays.
Come join us.
Come join us.
Apply now.
The Wichita Sedgwick County Law Enforcement Training Center is a combined facility with personnel from the Wichita Police Department and the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. The training center requires all applicants seeking the position of police officer, deputy sheriff, or detention deputy to pass a series of physical agility tests. The tests are designed to evaluate the physical fitness, the physical agility, and the strength of the applicant. Here is what you can expect and what you will need to do to pass the physical agility tests. All applicants should wear clothes they can move in and be comfortable in. Athletic clothing, like a tee-shirt and shorts or sweatpants, is a good example of proper clothing to wear for the physical agility tests. Also, wear athletic shoes with good traction. Sandals are not allowed. The first physical agility test is push-ups. You will do as many as you can in one minute. Here is what a proper push-up looks like. Your feet should be no more than shoulder width apart, hands in line with your shoulders, and hip and torso in a straight position. You will be required to go all the way down within inches of the mat or until the elbows are at 90 degrees and then back up. Be sure to maintain a tempo during the test so each push-up is done correctly and counted. The second physical agility test is sit-ups. Once again, you will be asked to perform the maximum number of sit-ups in one minute. Here is what a proper sit-up looks like. Notice that your knees are slightly bent, your feet are flat on the ground, and arms crossed over the chest. You will then lift your upper body from the mat until you are at or near a 90-degree angle or when the elbows are on the knees, then back down. Only proper sit-ups will be counted. The third physical agility test is called the Illinois Agility Run. This is a timed course that assesses an applicant's speed and agility. You will begin the test on your stomach with your fingertips behind the starting point and feet together. On the start command, you will get to your feet as quickly as possible and sprint to the top of the course and touch the line with one foot. You will then sprint back down to the bottom end of the course at the starting area. You will then weave through a series of cones to the top end, then weave back. After completing the weave, you will sprint to the line at the top of the course, touching the line with your foot, then sprint back down to the bottom of the course and finish line. Time will stop after you cross the finish line. You must finish the course without knocking over any cones. The final physical agility test administered is called the multi-stage run, or the beep test. The purpose of this test is to measure cardiovascular fitness and maximum oxygen uptake, or the VO2 max. You will start on a designated line and be required to run a distance of 20 meters to another line marked at the other end. An audible signal, or beep, will tell you when to run each time. As the test progresses through a series of levels, the time between the beeps will become shorter. You will continue to run from one end to the other until you are unable to keep up with the pace of the test. The monitor of the test will signal a warning if you fail to reach the line in time. You will have to stop if you fail to reach the line on two consecutive attempts. The monitor will announce the level in which you reached before stopping. Please remember the level you reached so it can be recorded later. In order to pass the physical agility test required by the Wichita Sedgwick County Law Enforcement Training Center, the applicant must complete each test and obtain a minimum cumulative score of 20 points. Scores are based on an individual's age and gender. You are encouraged to practice these tests before your evaluation. They can easily be practiced anywhere without any special equipment. Wichita Police Department applicants that have questions about the testing can contact the training center at 316-660-3810 or online at www.wichita.gov/wpd. Sedgwick County Sheriff applicants that have questions about the testing can contact the
Welcome here today. Having a safe and secure, secure community is very important to Sedgwick County. The Office of Medical Director plays a key role in providing clinical leadership and oversight for all aspects of pre-hospital patient care. This applies to all medical providers and agencies throughout the emergency medical system that we have here in Sedgwick County. Some of you may remember this building as the former Murdoch Tag Office, but through extensive remodeling, we're thrilled to have Dr. Gallagher and his team here in such a great facility today. The entire project took approximately 5... The entire project took approximately five months to complete. Total cost for $458,550.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. John Gallagher. I'm the System Medical Director for the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County and the very excited and proud new occupant of this building. While we are extremely grateful to Chief Leake and Fire District Number One for having housed our department for so long, it is just incredible to be in a facility like this. We manage the pre-hospital protocols, the guidelines which all of the EMTs and paramedics use to provide patient care, but we also provide the testing that is required to ensure competency within our providers. Everyone who works within our system has to pass written tests on clinical knowledge as well as the protocol familiarity, and then they have to pass physical hands-on testing to make sure that they have the necessary physical skills to perform the procedures appropriate for their level. And then, at the advanced level, our advanced EMTs and paramedics come into this simulation center to perform simulated patient encounters to make sure that they can take that mental knowledge and apply it in a real-world setting. So, this facility will dramatically improve our effectiveness.
So, all five commissioners came together to make this a reality for our Office of Medical Director today, and I want to thank all five commissioners, the other four, for help making this happen.
We are in the outdoor area of our simulation center. We have the ambulance simulator right behind me. We can bring the crews into a realistic environment and have them run calls and have it very realistic to the environment that they're in every day.
This is the control room, and so all of the information from out in the simulation center is wired back here. One of the things that's important to quality testing is that the person who's in front of the camera doesn't feel like that. They have to feel and believe like they are out in the real world delivering real patient care. And so, by bringing all of that information outside, piping it to a control room, we can have the exact same outcomes, but without that person feeling like they've got a false environment. In the face of an emergency, you don't get to pick your EMT or your paramedic. So, one of our jobs is to make sure that anyone who shows up at your door or at your car accident or your place of work is somebody that you would be happy choosing to provide your health care.
We're here to teach you about fire safety. You guys know anything about fire safety? That door's hot. What do we do if the door's hot? Do we go out? No, we don't open that door because we don't want all that hot smoke and fire in here. Okay.
Sedgwick County Fire District One would like to remind citizens that during periods of high fire danger, there are precautions you can take to help minimize the risk of starting a fire. Periods of high fire danger are defined by low humidity, long periods of very little moisture, and very high winds that are usually greater than 15 miles per hour. When fire danger is high, there are numerous causes that can ignite a fire with very little fuel involved. Here are some precautions that you can take. Be aware when discarding cigarettes, cigars, or other similar products. Ensure trailer chains don't drag on the ground and spark. Properly maintain vehicles to prevent sparks or flammable materials from coming out of the exhaust system. Completely extinguish all recreational burns such as barbecue grills, chimeneas, and fire pits with abundant amounts of water. Use extreme caution when welding or using a blowtorch. Use spark arrestors on portable gasoline-powered equipment such as lawn mowers, weed eaters, edgers, and chainsaws. Remember, open burns will not be allowed on high-fire danger days even with valid burn permits. Please call Sedgwick County Fire District One at 660-3473 or visit www.sedgwickcounty.org if you have any questions.
Well, we have 600 miles of paved roads, and so if we're on a six-year program, that means we redo 100 miles of road every year. And this one that you see today is pavement rejuvenation.
This is actually a project that's about, one of about six or seven tools in the toolbox we use in Sedgwick County to refurbish our roads.
They heat up the pavement and they mill off or grind up the top inch and they recycle that. That goes back down on the road. Also with that, they put an inch of virgin material on top of that.
When they get done, this road's as if it's a brand-new road. So, although this road's 11 years old and it costs $3 million a mile to fabricate this road originally, we can preserve this asset indefinitely.
Some taxpayers might think it's a waste of money. They can't see with the naked eye that these roads are, need something done, but that's what preventive maintenance is all about. There are microcracks in that pavement that lets water get down into the sub-bays and with that, we have freeze and thaw cycle in Kansas, which is really bad, and that's when your potholes start.
Are we wasting money or are we saving money? Well, the answer to that, that of course is we're spending some money, but the intent, of course, is to save money over time.
You keep good roads good. The road is an asset. It is not an expendable that you throw away.
Sedgwick County does it right because we've got great staff, they have excellent skills, they have good judgment, and we invest in Sedgwick County to make sure these roads are done at the right time with the right process. And with that, this road today is a brand-new road.
Really want to thank those who were in Sedgwick County 47 years ago who focused on making the Sedgwick County Zoo a reality. It's now the state's largest tourist attraction. We are proud of it because it demonstrates what we can do when we work together as a partner. We've been honored to be part of this process throughout the planning. We are excited about the master plan along with the private sector. Think about both now and think about what our future is going to become. Let's build a foundation for the next generation.
We're thrilled to announce today our final master plan that will guide us through the next 25 years. The guiding model throughout the plan will be to do better for all the resident animals and exemplify what we did for elephants just a few years ago. We'll be reconfiguring the zoo to add more space for animals and even better experiences for our visitors. The first projects on the list are items that will address a few of the zoo's immediate needs, a new entry, expanded Amer leopard habitat, and an electric-powered train. Once those items are complete, we'll be able to think bigger. What if you could ride through the air with orangutans swinging next to you just a few feet away? Imagine watching your son or daughter get married in front of a 20,000-gallon stingray habitat. Or imagine waking up with a giraffe looking through your hotel window, right here in Wichita, Kansas. Our city has a great deal of momentum right now and the zoo is thrilled to be part of that. But let's take just a moment if we can to talk about master plans and how organizations like our zoo accomplish them. Like others, we will tackle this in phases, and that is how we've accomplished so much of what we previously have accomplished out of the old master plan. It's by looking at what's most critical and factoring that in with what's doable. What we do know is the first phases of this effort, as Jeff described, needs to think about a new entryway and that's really a key part of our first phase. With the right combination of opportunity and partnership, that this first phase will include at least one expanded animal exhibit and that we think would likely be the Amer Leopard exhibit. Your Sedgwick County Zoo will continue to grow and expand and it will reflect positively on this community, be a great resource for this community and our families and the visitors that visit this area with us. So, thank you all for spending a warm, windy afternoon with us out here at the zoo and we hope you'll participate as we move forward with a lot of the exciting things in our master plan.
I-135, I-235, and K-254 were built in the mid-'60s to early-'70s. K-96 was built in the early 1990s. Today, over 93,000 vehicles per day use that interchange. Over 9,100 are semi-trucks. By 2050, over 160,000 vehicles per day are projected to use the North Junction.
You want freight.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County.